Your thumbs up, alright. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this evening's council meeting. If you haven't already, please silent your cell phones. Uh, when it, when we, or I make the announcement of the agenda item, at that point, if you're the presenter, you can come to the podium, state your name, uh, address of residence. When I call for public comment, uh, those that are not the presenters, if you have questions or inquiries with the council, you can come to the podium at that time. And also state your name and address of residence. One point zero roll call.
Here.
Here.
Wyman?
Here.
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 Five council members are present in chambers. I will take the majority of three favorable votes to move agenda items. Two point zero pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, every single justice.
Three point zero consent agenda review and approve. There are three agenda items. I will read them off. After which council can make a motion that includes consent, which will bring all three up for discussion and vote. Our council can make a motion of any of the items. Item A minutes from November twelfth, twenty twenty four, regular session. Item B current bills. Item C liquor licenses.
Uh, just for the council's information, a updated expense approval report was brought tonight, hard copy. We have, uh, fixed the public copy that was made available online. Uh, we just included the last council meetings, uh, expense approval along with this council meeting. So we took it out. There are no additions. We just took out those from last meeting.
Move to approve consent agenda.
Motion by Rich, second by Brooke. Uh, council feel free to raise questions, comments on any of the three items. Does the public have any comment? Gina, will you conduct a roll vote, please?
Please, Smith?
Yes.
Wyman?
Yes.
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion to approve consent carries. Four point zero, public hearings. Four point one. Public hearing to approve the rezoning request by S- Stryker Enterprises LLC of the property entitled Lot Twenty Five, Anamos Commercial Park, Second Edition in Anamos, Iowa, from M one light industrial to C two arterial commercial. Item A mayor opens the public hearing. Uh, the public hearing is open at this time. Item B proceedings. Now public can come to the podium, uh, and ask any questions or make comments on the agenda item. Item C mayor closes the public hearing. Uh, due to no public involvement, engagement, uh, the public hearing is closed. Four point two ordinance nine six four rezoning the property entitled Lot Twenty Five, Anamos Commercial Park, Second Edition in Anamos, Iowa, from M one light industrial to C two arterial commercial.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Rich and second by K. Council discussion. Aim true to, uh, our usual routine. Does the public have any comment? Gina, will you conduct a roll vote, please?
Wyman?
Yes.
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 Motion to approve waiver carry. Uh, possible waiver of second reading. Also, if you're interested, this is where you can make a motion to waive the second. Hearing no motion, uh, uh, second reading will occur at the next council meeting. Five point zero proclamations, none. Six point zero postponed items. Six point one review and approve. Implementation of a joint funded initiative between the city of Anamosa and Anamosa Community School Drake District to re- to create a school resource officer position.
Second.
Motion by Brooke. Second by Dan. Council discussion.
I'll start off. I'm a little frustrated as to how this has gotten to this point. I want to know, I'd, I, I have yet to figure out from our budget how this is going to happen. And we had a council meeting a couple of weeks ago where the comment was made. We only have one chance to get it right. And if we get it wrong, it, it can be a problem. And I am not against a school resource officer. So I wanted to make that clear. But in looking at our budget and knowing what's coming ahead, I have no idea other than cutting overtime, doing other things within the budget that I, no one has been able to provide to me any information on how the city of Anamosa is going to be able to fund this beyond year one. And an idea that we will make it work is not an accounting function. Um, I, I don't believe that, um, I feel comfortable that, I don't know where we're going to get the money to go. Uh, and the worst thing that would happen is we say, yes, we'll do this. And three years from now we go, great idea. It was a well thought out idea to have somebody. But we can't afford to do this. And if someone could point to me in our budget and the upcoming budget session, where we're going to be able to come up with the money that we're going to obligate ourselves to if we do this. I'm, I'm more than happy to listen, but I don't see it. Uh, the only thing I guess I can say at this time regarding that is we certainly are a bit ahead of the game when it comes to the budget for next fiscal year. Uh, of course, we're, we'll be spending the next, uh, month or so trying to get some forecasts, um, uh, financial data together as we prepare for the upcoming budget year. Um, of course, we won't even know our taxable revenues, um, until after January. So I think it's been indicated to me anyways, this was, uh, more of a, um, affirmation for the school, uh, to let them know that we'll, um, be interested in proceeding with this and hammering out the details. Um, I believe the last, uh, discussion of this, the one caveat that was put in there just through the discussion was that, uh, if we were going to run into some difficulties, um, I guess either side at that point can go back to the drawing board or put a stop to the process. Um, but at this moment is just to proceed with the planning, uh, stages of this. Um, unfortunately, I can't directly answer those questions because I don't know, uh, those financials are a question mark. And maybe I misunderstand how the agenda item appears. But if this is, if this is simply, yes, let's continue to talk about it, then I'm okay with that. I am not okay. I, I'm not okay voting tonight that yes, we will commit to, to a specific dollar. So if, if I'm mistaken, I, I'm more than happy to move forward with that discussion.
So for councils awareness of YI as well as public. We initially, initially talked about this at a council meeting approximately four to six weeks ago, probably closer to six. Uh, since the, and, and at that time, it was, material was given to council. You had time to digest. Uh, and I even made the comment that this is not going to just happen quickly because you, all of council needed adequate time to come to some type of, uh, decision on their own. About a week or two ago now, I have spoken, reached out to Superintendent Hannah. Uh, spoke with him of where some of my thoughts were. I followed that up with a conversation with Chief Worley, uh, who in a sense quarterbacked this from the city side. Uh, it was a route that I'm not used to going because in my world, you, you have all the discussions. You peel the layers off, you talk in depth about a project and then you make your decision that from a company standpoint or an individual standpoint, are you in or you out? That's kind of how my private world works. Uh, in speaking with them, they both said that they really thought the next step was for the city to make a decision if they were in for more pursuit of this program. Uh, I can, I can see why you would go that route. Uh, again, it's not something I'm accustomed to, but I can understand getting the commitment from the city if they were willing to pursue further discussions. So I contacted Jeremiah and asked for this to be on this evening's agenda. Going, going that path, it is the council, I guess, tonight would be looking to either walk away from this program as far as financial involvement. Or agree, commit to further discussions related to the program, which would include the financial obligation that the city would have. When asking Jeremiah to put it on the agenda tonight, that is where I thought the next step needed to do. So tonight would be a decision that no the city is not looking to be involved with this program. Or yes, we will commit to it to have further discussions regarding the program. Uh, we do have, uh, some additional information tonight. Uh, you know, again, like I've said before, devil is always in the details. Uh, you know, this officer, this person cannot be going and having ten different bosses. That's just, that's not going to work. I've experienced that, uh, myself and just tell you, you know, and I'm sure most of you have. And that's just not a good route to go. So those details have to occur. Uh, what I would suggest is that there be a committee from the city, committee from the school, subcommittees, I guess is best. Uh, on the city side, I would look for Jeremiah and myself, uh, Chief Worley and one council member. The school, I will let them to decide who from the school would they would like to see in a committee to talk through all the details. That's, I guess that is what I would like to see the council approved tonight if they're willing to continue pursuing this program.
So if I'm understanding this correctly, this is not the end all decision. There is another decision to be made at a later date as to whether or not to actually go through with it.
That's how I am looking at it, yes.
Okay.
And under those circumstances, I absolutely think it's a good idea to continue the discussion. Because I do think a school resource officer is positive in most regards, but and, and so with that understanding, I'm, I'm okay with continuing to explore that, uh, that position.
So to clarify, we're voting to discuss, not to commit funds to hiring.
The, the motion did not state that. Uh, we can either have the motion amended to include for clarification or we can allow that to come to a vote. Vote it down and then I'll ask for it if there is a second motion. That is really the council's choice of which one of those two you feel comfortable tonight making that decision. But yes, K, uh, again, you can commit to further the discussion with no financial obligation. Uh, and at some point, if you don't like how it's shaping out, the council then could just walk away.
Because if, if I'm reading this, if the motion is to approve what is stated on the agenda, it is to implement the program. So
That's how I read it.
I would, I would feel more comfortable if it was amended. Uh, either that or like you said, we vote that motion down and come back with an amended one. Because now just, just to be, I'm not against it at all.
I understand.
I do, I'm with Todd. There needs to be some further details built into this thing and not just going in blind.
So Brooke, you made the motion. Would you be willing to amend the motion with some of the points that have been discussed?
Discuss further before.
So the city would be making a commitment to move forward with all discussions. Dan, you second that motion? Are you good with the amendment?
Fine.
Jeremiah, did we color within side the lines of
Yes.
Robert's rules of order?
Yes, I believe it's fine. We, um, the wording on this was difficult. I think what we, uh, had discussed in previous meetings is just, we were looking for that. Uh, again, the affirmation from the city, uh, that we would at least proceed. Um, I think the sentiment just that has been relayed is, you know, neither side wants to continue to, um, I quite bluntly waste time if this is not something we're willing to consider. Um, so I think that's just it, be willing to consider and continue to proceed with this initiative is what, what we're looking for.
Council, you have any further discussion? I will open up for public comment. If you don't at this time, uh, with public con- after public comment, I will come back to you if you have anything further you would like to mention. Uh, this time, public comment?
Darren, you know, four twenty eight Holt Street, uh, Anamos Superintendent. Um, I guess as I look at this, uh, I can't answer your budget questions. I can answer my budget questions. Right? And our board is very well aware that we're looking at seventy to seventy-five thousand dollars. I think the number that you're looking at is no. I think you know what the number is. You got to decide whether you have the money or you want to spend the money. Okay, it's not a mystery what, what's left on a salary benefits. We've talked about that number for four months now. Okay, you know what that number is. You got to decide whether you want to spend the money or not. As far as the devil's in the details, we have a sharing agreement that has worked very well for Monticello. I reviewed that document again today. All the things are laid out in it. Okay? That presentation from there. So I, I'm, I guess I'm not sure what details other than whether you have or want to spend the money. Because we can, we can pull up twenty eighty agreements because that's what has to happen from Monticello, Linmore. We have all of those that lay out, they're all based on the same thing, lay out all the duties, who's in charge, who that person answers to. Did we provide that? The Monticello agreement? Okay? And, and I guess the last thing I would say, I didn't receive one, other than the mayor, I didn't receive one phone call from anybody. Nobody asked me about details. Right? So I, at certain point, we got to decide whether we're moving forward or not. I'm not sure what the school would offer in any joint session. Right? Unless you're not willing or do not have the funds for the, the thirty-ish thousand for salaries and benefits. I thought, you know, when I talked with the chief, we'd laid out the other stuff. So, you know, from our end, uh, to be fair, this discussion, I reached out in July to start this discussion. So this did not come in November. I started this, this conversation in July. Okay, so I'm not sure. And then I talked to my board members, they're not sure what you're looking for. There's nobody asked, nobody got a hold of me and said, hey, these are our questions. Can you answer these? Right? Which is somewhat disappointing if now you have questions. Because we could have handled those earlier. We have documentation that shows exactly how the relationship works. Right? It's a, it's a matter of funding. So that, that's just, I just wanted to mention that.
Thanks, Darren. Anyone else?
Eric Worley, Police Chief, um, I'm happy to go get whatever information that the council would need. Um, I'm happy to work on my budget to make this fit into my current budget, the way it exists as much as possible. I've also been doing research into grants for this type of position. Um, for me, obviously I don't have control of the entire city's budget, but I'm confident that between grants and manipulating my budget, um, I'll go out and fundraise if I have to do it. But I feel like this position is that important. Um, I understand that the budget is a big component of it. It makes me sad if that's the reason that this is not going to happen. Um, I feel like this is something that, uh, would benefit our community as a whole, it's going to benefit the city. Um, it's going to benefit the department in many ways. Um, I've gotten a total of fourteen MOUs from different cities, happy to provide those if that's something the council would like to see. Um, I came up with a job description. Those are the things that I think are the next step in this is coming up with those. What's the job description look like? What does the policy look like? What is the MOU look like? And then as we're coming into budget season, that's when we start figuring out where it fits in. Um, like you said, I'm happy to manipulate my budget as much as possible to make this work. Um, not that there's a ton of room, but I can move some stuff around. And again, the, um, last time I found a grant for an SRO, it was a three-year grant. It was a total of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, where it was fifty thousand dollars per year. I don't know that that specifically exists still, but I know it has happened as recently within the last couple of years. Um, those grants usually don't come out until March. But again, I'm looking for those, trying to find other departments that utilize those, see how they work, that sort of thing. So if there is any information desired by the council, I'm happy to find that if I don't currently already have it.
Chief Worley mentioned that uh, he's presented a job description of this, uh, officers, I guess duties. We just received that this evening. Inside of that, as I looked through it here briefly and quickly earlier, those, some of the questions that I would have had are outlined in here. If I was council voting, just got this information tonight. There is no way I would be voting this evening to approve something that I have not had ample of time to digest. So this is one of those pieces of material that I was looking to have those conversations on on behalf of the, of the council before they came to making a final decision. These are the things that should have been pre- presented prior to the council meeting, uh, back in November as well. So I know there's been some talk, rumors about this being slow rolled. This is not being slow rolled by the council. You want to look at someone that has hit the pause bunny button to get the information they need to make this decision, you can look right here. Because I am the one that told Jeremiah this will not be on the agenda until there was enough information and the council had ample of time to digest this. Is this a value added program for the community? We can all be in agreement with that. But when you're talking tax dollars for the residents of the, within the community who are not only paying tax dollars to the city, they're paying tax dollars to the county. Both of those fund this type of a program. So you can look my way if you think this is being slow rolled and my num- my phone number to contact me is on the city's website. Feel free. With that, there's a motion on the floor. I will allow further public comment if you have something to state.
Tyler Hahn, police officer here. Um, I watched the meeting last time. I don't, none of the officers stood up and spoke. Um, I guess one thing I can offer is that for both sides to think about too, I think it'll help both, both ends of it is we have been down a guy for a year and eight months now, and he is just about to finish up his FTO, uh, be on his own. So I know from my perspective, I've worked there in a lot last two years with a lot of stuff going on at the school. Um, I'm in big support of this. I think it's something that we definitely need. I think it'll trickle out into our ability to be effective with other things and, um, be more efficient everywhere. Um, but at the same time, me personally, my hope is that we get somebody hired and trained, uh, and ready to be on their own before this SRO were to start, I guess, in their full capacity. That is going to require some training for them as well. Um, and just to point out that like it, nobody wants to be cops anymore. It's hard to find good cops. It's, it just, it is. I mean, we're a year and eight months before Ron's going to be on his own. Um, so I don't with the hope of having that officer that's going to be an SRO, um, replaced and ready to uh, be filled when that is implemented, if it is, um, just because we're down. I mean, we're three guys down right now, just with Ron's position and him being in training and, um, two are out on sick leave. I mean, it's hard to it's, it makes it tough. I'm sure it kills the budget too and overtime and stuff like that, but, um, I think that's something that would be important. So it doesn't really That would be important, so it doesn't really. I guess rush it, cause it's gonna take time to get applicants, it's gonna take time to get somebody hired and trained. Hopefully we get somebody that's certified and stuff. Everything else is coming along the way as far as what city can offer officers, um. I know like Monticello, they just. I think they had to post three times to get somebody qualified. Um. That they wanted to hire, so. I I just, I think that that's something to keep in mind that. For why I said, I think it probably even be next budget year before we'd even have somebody hired. You know, that being said, it just, I think something to consider where it's not really a rush. It. You know, I just, it's not gonna end up being a rush, cause we, I know a couple of us hope that. That's gonna be filled before. Uh, but nonetheless, I think it's definitely important, so. Consider. That's it. Thank you.
Anyone else, public or council?
I uh. I I have something to add. And I know people get tired of hearing me, but. With regard to the research or the discussion amongst the. Council. Community, school board. I was very comfortable after the. Hearing last month or the the gathering last month. That the school board and the school district absolutely know where their funding is coming from. So I didn't have questions about. Their. Ability to cover the expense. It was very well laid out. As Mayor Smith said. My concern is that. My duty is to the city budget. And to figure out how it's gonna work. And. I have questions. I reached out to the people that I need to reach out to to. Um. Make me feel more comfortable about the position as a position. But I don't have the answers to the money part. And. I can't create. Room in a budget. Uh, I can look at things and I can certainly look at. Overtime, part-time. I can look at all of those things and go, well, there's, there's places where we could figure out a way to fix it. But. That doesn't answer the question long term. That's the first thing. The second thing, uh. Officer Hunt. Got up and mentioned that. Um. I think he mentioned ultimately that there are three positions. That. Or three officers that we need. As recently as a week ago, I was taking a tour of. The police department and. It was an excellent tour. It was very informative. But I can tell you that any part of that police department that I was in. There was an officer over here talking about. Well, we don't have a sergeant. Um, we need two more officers. I was given a statistic that for every thousand people that we have in town, we need two officers. Well, my math. Says that a town of four thousand, which we are not. We already have eight officers. So I know that things are coming our direction that we are going to have to address that include. A budget. And I would love to have a full staff, even in the job that I do every day. I want good officers. I want a staff of officers because it will make my job as a professional. Better. But. It is the devil in the detail is ultimately, I'm gonna be looking at where's the dollar coming from, cause I've also got other departments that I have to be aware of. That need. Money, and I'm trying to figure out where we can take money from to do this and to do it right. So I want it. I I'm on the record as saying, I'm okay with an SRO, but I gotta figure out how to pay for it.
Uh, we have the motion by amended motion by Brooke, uh, the amended second by Dan. I think it's time to take this to a roll vote. Would you please, Jenna?
Yes.
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 Motion to move forward from the city as a commitment to pursue this SRO position. Seven point zero, council action item seven point one, resolution twenty twenty-four dash sixty-three. Approving the TIF TIF debt certification for fiscal year twenty twenty-six.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Rich, second by Kay. Council discussion. Public comment? Gina?
Yes.
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 Motion to approve carried, resolution twenty twenty-four dash sixty-four. Obligating urban renewal tax re- revenue funds for Nova Holdings LLC Lot Two.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Kay, second by Rich. Council discussion. Public comment? Gina?
Yes.
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 Motion to approve carried. Second point three, resolution twenty twenty-four dash sixty-five. Obligating urban renewal tax revenue funds for No- Nova Holdings LLC Lot Three.
Prove.
Motion by Rich, second by Brooke, council discussions. Public comment? Gina?
Yes.
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 Right, yes.
Yes.
Motion to approve carried. Seven point four, resolution twenty twenty-four dash sixty-six. Obligating ur- urban renewal tax revenue funds for Blue Track Inc.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Kay, second by Rich. Also discussion. Public comment? Gina?
Yes.
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 Motion to approve carried. Seven point five, resolution twenty twenty-four dash sixty-seven. Obligating urban renewal tax revenue funds for Fairway Stores Inc.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Rich, second by Brooke. Council discussion. Public comment? Gina?
Yes.
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 Seven point six, oops, sorry. Motion carries. Seven point six, resolution twenty twenty-four dash sixty-eight. Obligating urban renewal tax revenue funds for Blue Max Enterprises Incorporated.
Move to approve.
Motion by Rich, second by Brooke. Council discussion. Public comment? Gina?
Yes.
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 Motion carries, seven point seven, resolution twenty twenty-four dash sixty-nine, obligating. Urban renewal tax revenue funds for By Design LLC.
Move to approve.
Motion by Rich, second by Brooke. Council discussion. Public comment? Gina?
Yes.
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 Motion carries, seven point eight, resolution twenty twenty-four dash seventy. Obligating urban renewal tax re- revenue funds for Nova Holdings LLC Metal Ridge Housing.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Kay, second by Rich. Council discussion. Public comment? Gina?
Yes.
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 Motion to approve carried. Seven point nine, resolution twenty twenty-four dash seventy-one. Obligating urban renewal tax revenue funds for Metal Ridge Housing LMI Obligations.
Move to approve.
Motion by Rich, second by Brooke. Council discussion. Public comment? Gina?
My mother.
Yes.
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 Motion to approve carried. Seven point ten, review and approve annual urban renewal report. A U R R for fiscal year ending June twentieth, twenty twenty-four.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Kay, second by Rich. Council discussion. Public comment? Gina?
Yes.
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 Motion to approve carried. Seven point eleven, review and approve. Fiscal year twenty-six fire department budget.
Uh, we met. Last week? Last week. Got this hammered out, um. Do you have any questions? Um, sleep chief ranks here, you can probably add some more details. A couple of increases. The the predominant ones were for bunker gear and some. Uh, dilapidation, and what you call it, moisture getting through the existing structure that needs to be repaired. I think those were the most significant areas of this. You know, here.
Move to approve.
No second. Motion by Kay, second by Dan. Council discussion. As I see this, we're looking at. Just short of an eighty-five thousand dollar increase. From fiscal year, current fiscal year twenty-five to fiscal year twenty-six.
Yeah, just to kind of give you an idea, the bunker gear that we discussed. In the past, they have. It's an all or none for getting grants, the way I understand it. And unfortunately. They've got two different groupings of bunker gear at this point in time. So this would be for half of the bunker gear this year. And then the plan is for half the following year because. They can't get it all within one grouping. Of um, the grant money. Going forward. So going forward, we can get back on cycle to get that grant, but at this point in time, we can't.
What you're referring to is bunker gear. Is that the equipment maintenance category or? I'm.
I think that's what we put it in.
Yeah, so.
Seventy-two thousand.
Okay, thank you. I thought that's what we're talking about.
I think it's based on that, Rich. So we'll be looking at seventy-two thousand dollars this year.
And next year.
Year twenty-six. Seventy-two fiscal twenty-seven.
Correct.
And then after that. When it needs to be replaced, it'll come all at one time.
Yeah, cause if I remember right, I think Dan, correct me, but isn't it good for ten years? Wasn't that the? Isn't about a ten-year lifespan on that?
Yes, a year is about a ten-year lifespan, so December of twenty-six. Over half our year expires. Uh. Last time around, we got an AFG grant through FEMA. And that paid all except for five percent of our gear, or five percent of the cost of our gear. But since we have two different ages right now, cause we had half of them get damaged in a fire. We got two different ages of expiration. So our FEMA grant will not cover that this time around. So the goal is to get back on that cycle. Uh. I think in June of. Two thousand twenty-six, get the first half of the gear, and then July of twenty-six, get the second half, so they're split on two fiscal years. So then we're back to having the same expiration date ten years from now, so we'll qualify for a grant. Cause it's an all or nothing grant.
But that makes sense. I was wondering how you were gonna navigate that in, I was thinking in two calendar years.
Yeah, so. Break it up over two fiscal years, so it's not a. Hit all in one year. Um. So that was.
That was kind of our plan.
So that was a big, one of the biggest increases that we had in there, and a couple of the line items at the beginning of our budget, we trimmed some of that down. Just cause we had some access over the last couple of years. So.
Thanks for that explanation. The other council discussion.
We kind of thought seventy-two thousand was gonna be a little easier to adjust than a hundred and forty-some thousand.
Public comment? Gina?
Yes.
Yes.
Hey, Smith?
Yes.
Wymer?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion to approve carried. Seven point twelve, review and approve change order for Martin Garner Architecture in the amount of. Nine hundred fifty-seven dollars, eighteen cents for the downtown facade improvement project phase two. Phase two.
Derek Clemson, Jones County Economic Development. Uh, don't know if you had any questions on it or not. Um, this was requested by one of the owners. They had some masonry work done to their building and they had some. Stain that was put on it, I don't know how many decades ago, and at the, when we originally did the masonry work, they didn't wanna wash it, but after all the masonry work was done, it was two-toned. And they liked all their brick to match, so they requested this, and that's something that. We did, that they approved at the end of October, so we could get it still washed while it was. Um, nice out, but then the paperwork is just a little slower to come through. So this was an owner requested change order.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Kay, second by Todd. Council discussion. Public comment? Gina?
Yes.
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 Motion to approve change order carried. Seven point thirteen, review and approve consent agenda. Pay request totaling ninety thousand, five hundred fifty-nine dollars, sixty-seven cents. There are three items uh listed here on the agenda. I will read all three. Council can make a motion that includes consent. Which would bring all three up for discussion in one vote. Or council can make a motion on any of the items. Item A from H R Green in the amount of one thousand dollars for the water treatment plant disinfection system project. Item B from Martin Garner Architecture in the amount of four thousand, five hundred sixty-seven dollars, ninety-nine cents. For the downtown facade improvement project phase three. Item C from Peak Construction in the amount of eighty-four thousand, nine hundred ninety-one dollars, sixty-eight cents. For the downtown facade improvement project phase two.
Second.
Motion by Brooke. Second by Rich. Council discussion on any of the three items.
Where are we at with this? The water treatment plant, disinfection system. Seems like it just keeps dragging on and on and on.
Steve Agnes, Utility Superintendent, so the contractor is probably ninety percent done. There's just a little. Um. Finalization, the biggest problem we've had here. Has been some fittings in the tanks that he's had to.
has been some fittings in the tanks that he's had to replace. And then when we hooked the new pumps up, there we realized or it was realized that the two pumps weren't were uh fighting against each other. So they had to, they're having to do some more replumbing for that. So it's getting real close to being done. We want it done also.
Well, these fees from Green add up every month, but I'm just saying, it seems like it just keeps. You know what I'm saying?
Understand.
Stevie.
Thank you.
Are you within budget? Are within the uh proposed uh cost of this?
I believe so. There's going to be one change order that's going to amount to just, I think it's going to be a thousand dollars or less because of the chain, the bad fittings on the tank. So and then the labor to fix them.
Contingency can't absorb that.
I thinks it will.
It it can.
I think.
So you, in a sense, would still stay within.
Should be then, yes.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments from council? Public comment. Gina.
Yes.
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 Motion to approve consent carries. Eight point zero city administrators report.
I have two items. Uh, first of all, I wanted to get this in the council package. So we had something somewhat tangible for the hotel motel grant program. Uh, applications are being accepted for that. It's out on the website. Um, but again, I want to get it in this public meeting. We do anticipate seeing a slight bump in that. So we're um looking at probably around thirty eight thousand five hundred. Uh, that would be eligible for disbursement under this grant. Um, the applications, I've got a PDF or a Word, fillable Word document, both available uh online. And I did uh go ahead and send that out to last year's um recipients of this as well. So we can try to get the word out. Uh, this closes at the end of December. Of course, we talk about it during budget season once we get all this in. So just want to get that out there. And then City Hall will be closed Thursday and Friday for Thanksgiving holiday.
Also, you have any questions or comments for Jeremiah under the city administrators report? Thanks for that report, Jeremiah. Nine point zero mayor and council reports, nine point one mayor's report. Chief Worling and the entire police department team. The uh new police department looks fabulous, uh but I'm not telling you guys anything you don't already know. The tour was very informational. It it is a facility that the community can and is proud of. Uh, I know there's a few things that you are still looking to improve uh down there. Uh, so I guess move forward in your budget, would do it uh fiscally. Uh, again, thanks for setting that up and offering the uh open house tour night to that's all I have. Nine point two council reports.
I missed the library board meeting. Anything you want to talk about, Eric?
On behalf of Kay.
Well, I could surely have another meeting.
We don't have anything too exciting going on. We're just working on budget like everybody else. Um, but I also will say we are still selling the note cards or the, excuse me, the greeting cards I talked about the last time. So we have three different ones. We have some watercolor. We have some fun youthful ones. And then we have um some like a five pack of places around Anamosa. So it has like the penitentiary, it has the old library, it has the old hospital, it has the old post office, and then it has one of the bridges in town. So you can buy a five pack for fifteen dollars and all the money goes to the friends of the library and that is to fundraise for the water fountain that we purchased this year. So that is on sale at the desk. December first, we are going to be at the vendor fair as well. So you can catch us there as well.
Anywhere. Thank you for that report.
I just remembered I signed up for it. Well, I knew about.
Anyone else? Ten point zero public comment for items not on the agenda.
Eric Worling Police Chief, um I just wanted to piggyback off of your comments, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the open house that we had was very well intended. We got a lot of compliments. I enjoyed seeing so many council members there to take the tour. Um, had several people ask if we were going to make that a yearly event. I don't know if we'll do that quite yet, but we did get those comments. And the people who um did these a few things for us afterwards want to remain anonymous, but after the open house, because of the generosity of the community, we had some equipment donated to the PD. Um, there was a community uh computer monitor that was donated and then a large screen for the training room. So we could use that for trainings. And it was strictly out of the kindness of people's hearts when they came in and saw the PD and wanted to help out. So to those people who made those donations, I appreciate it. I promised I would not say their names, but um but it was all attended and uh I appreciate that everybody came out. Thank you.
Well, at that rate, you may want to give strong consideration and make a this and that in. Thanks, Chief. Eleven point zero adjournment, see means meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everyone, for taking time to uh.